Oops. Watch that step.
We ain't gonna see it in the video.
So where you headed?
Uh, out of government. I'm doing office in the city. Something a little different.
Yeah. See, you all may have seen this here.
I mean, that was a whole mess. I was like, we got no, I don't know.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I mean, um, true.
Yeah, true. The research had them on that. I was thinking we made that one.
There you go.
He knows.
Well, it's worked.
I'm here for a while.
I know, I know.
Got that message to her. This was from last week. I sent you a photograph of it. An email saying I ended up with that coming home, weren't they? Yeah, and I was like, oh crap. So I took a photo and emailed it, but I guess.
Ready?
Emily, if you get disconnected, it's because I pulled.
I would like to advise all those present. The notice of this meeting has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. And that notice was published in the city website. Copies were provided to the Bergen Record L especial, the North Star Ledger, Jersey Journal, also placed on a bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. Written objections, if any, should be made to the city clerk. Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and the visible liberty of justice for all.
Mr. Cohen. Ms. Fisher. Mrs. Jabour. Mr. President Zano.
Present.
Mr. Quintero.
Present.
Mr. Ramos. Mr. Russo.
Present.
President Doyle.
Present.
Former president. All right.
Okay.
Council President, I just want to mention if we have a moment of silence for Cosmo Santilio, who passed, who worked for the city for 19 years, and Joe Shine's brother.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lor.
Amen.
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 Ms. Fisher is present. Okay. So out of the five ordinances that are on tonight, four of them are going to be carried until May 7th, and then the one ordinance is going to be carried to the special meeting on April 24th. That's ordinance number five.
So B 751 is the only one that we'll be acting upon this evening, which is the second one. And then if you're looking at an agenda other than one provided tonight, we have a number of things that are being carried or removed. And I'm gonna, Jerry, are you gonna help me with this?
Yeah.
Well, ordinance for first reading, number five, is been removed. And the accompanying resolution, CD 6, to send it to the planning board, is also removed.
Right.
And I think that's it for changes from what you may have seen over the weekend.
All right, we have a hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 192 parking for persons with disabilities, B 751.
Okay, and Ms. Waiters, I see that you've signed up. Did you sign up for the one ordinance that?
Everything, yes.
Well, there's only one, so, but yes, then.
Yes, again, yes.
That's correct.
Hi, Pat Waiters, 12, I mean, 15 church towers. People keep calling me requiring about the handicap committee, and they will say it's no committee. Could you clarify that tonight?
Ray Mos, pressure.
Somebody talking.
Sorry.
Oh.
He's just acknowledging Councilman Ramos coming.
Hey, you saw in trouble already, Pat.
I'm sorry, Council President. I just rushed it. Let me just take it down a notch.
Yep.
Please clarify that. You know, I'm no longer on the committee. I told the individuals that's coming to me. Thank you too, Mr. Ramos, for clarifying. It's one of the persons I sent directly to you. We need to know, is it a handicap committee? How is it being ran? And so on and so forth. And I'm quite sure you guys got the email. If you didn't, I'll give it to you after the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Cohen, pressure.
No more members of the public have signed up to speak on B 751. Motion to close. All those in favor? Aye. Councilmen and women. Mr. Freina, call the vote.
On B 751, Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour.
Yes.
Mr. President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Public portion on the agenda and resolution.
Okay. Okay, so this is for publics wishing to speak on resolutions that we will be acting upon tonight. Cory Davis on CL 4.
Hello, I'm here to talk about the.
I'm sorry, there is no CL 4.
No, it's the helicopter resolution.
I apologize.
All right. Hey, guys, so I'm here to talk about the helicopter problem that we've got in Hoboken that's caused by the Kearney Airport. So after the crash on Monday, we had 319 flights in the New York City area. Out of the three New York City airports, 68 of those came from Kearney. Yesterday, we had 333 flights. 71 were from Kearney. Today, they shut down the tour traffic out of Kearney, and it was only commuter flights. So obviously, the FAA is looking into the safety aspects of these, and the tours are not operating as they normally were. The amount of traffic, there's around 27,000 flights a year out of the Kearney Airport, all of them coming towards the New York City area and flying directly over Hoboken and Jersey City. When, the Newark Airport uses their runway 29, which they have to do anytime the wind blows from the west, and right now during their construction, they're using it exclusively for arrivals. All of those helicopters have to fly at 200 to 300 feet over Jersey City and Hoboken so as to avoid the commercial air traffic, to avoid a situation like what happened in DC. It puts a huge strain on, you know, disrupting our lives. And then after this crash, this is their, you know, second strike in six years, where we've seen helicopters based out of the Kearney Airport crashing into the river. So I wanted to speak with my support of our resolution and really ask all of you to reach out to our federal representatives, whether that's Congressman Nandez, Andy Kim, Cory Booker, and the Secretary of Transportation, Sean Duffy, and FAA Administrator Chris Rocheloe, to highlight this problem, that the helicopter traffic has gotten out of control. It's unsafe, and the residents are sick and tired of it, and we want these helicopters off of our roofs. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good, it's actually really good.
Okay. Manuel Rivera Soler.
Good evening, Council President, Council Vice President, Council, and members of the public. Thankful that you're all here and you made the effort and made quorum. I appreciate that, and members of the public, they'll. In consent agenda here, Council President, there's not too much. You mentioned one that you removed. You said C 6, did you mean CA 6?
CD 6, which is on page 5. It's just sending the first reading ordinance to the planning board.
Thank you.
But since that's removed, we don't need to send it.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification. Consent agenda, A 1, if someone could help members of the public with a little more information. Bless you. Climate action innovation. There's a lot happening in climate action innovation. It's almost hard to make notes and try to follow all of the wherases. But I'm going to, I'll wait.
Quiet down in the back. I'm sorry, Manny.
Thank you. Thank you to members of the public. CA 4, CA 5, and CA 6. CA 4 and CA 5, I know that they're already being funded by the Hoboken Water Utilities, but how do they connect other than being in the same place? And we also know, or if you can make note of these amounts that are being put on these resolutions. CA 9, also am in favor of, and I hope that the application gets its due merit and people who are working on it. We can get that grant for the Tom Oliveri Park. That is a community center, that is a community park, pardon, that is very close and dear to the neighborhood in community development. CD 3, and in that one, Council President, if members of the public could just have a little more, can you elaborate a little more as to why and what the resolution is not for, but what is being made this area for redevelopment? Especially in the neighborhood where you're speaking of? Is something being taken out? What is the specific reason it's being changed in some way? Also, I move on to clerk, number two. Again, Council President, I just don't know how many times do members of the public have to come and ask, where's the budget? We appreciate it that somebody is doing something about it, but, you know, we need the budget. I hope that you are sending your memos and the members of the public can finally see the budget before December 2025. I'm just trying to be helpful here. There's not that many members of the public, but anyway, I'll try to continue and make it short. Again, you took away, I believe you removed, introduction was at 5, right? Not 4?
For first reading?
Yes, first reading.
It was 5, yes.
It was 5. Okay, then that, I'll get that one later. And I also want to, in the new business, also want to unite my voice to the member of the public that spoke before me. It is very important that we do have some type of unifying factor in this resolution. If we can get other municipalities, I don't know if you have already, but it's not in the note. If we could get other municipalities to unite with this resolution in concurrence with their own resolution, of course, so that we can get more eyes on this situation and not wait for there to be a horrific tragic accident on our shores. Regardless, we need action, and we need the community. We need the council. We need the mayor. We need everyone that was mentioned before in our government to work on this and do it quickly, because due to the atmosphere that we have in the federal government, it might be hard. But we need to work on it regardless if it's hard or not. And with that, Council President, I will yield back the rest of my time, and I thank you for your attention.
Thanks, Manny. Thank you, Mr. Rivera Soler. You yield back seven seconds.
I do, unless you want to give me more.
Okay. As far as CD 3, Manny, about the redevelopment, it's just the portion on Marshall Street, which used to be the PSE and G facility that was consolidated uptown near 12th Street. And this is city-owned land, and it's immediately adjacent to the HHA. And this parcel is being included in the HHA, the Housing Authority Redevelopment Area, since it's contiguous, and it will help facilitate the first phase so that residents won't have to move more than once, and the project will move more quickly. So that's what that is. And the budget has been announced, it has been announced that the budget will be introduced on April 24th at our special meeting next Thursday. Thank you. Okay. All right, anyway. No, it's a virtual meeting. It's a Zoom virtual meeting. It is not in person. It's an introduction, so there would be, there's no comment on it. It's a first reading, so there will be a hearing there subsequently at some point.
But there's a presentation on it.
There's a, yes, and there is a public portion at the end of the meeting that people can speak on anything they like. So Patricia Waiters.
Pat Waiters, 12, 15 church towers. I'm still looking for the BA. I just got here, you gotta give me one quick second. The BA position, I seen it online, but it's not on this agenda. Why not? The new business administrator appointee?
I don't think.
It should have been on here. It is online. I didn't come to the meeting for nothing. And this is with respect to Jason, as much as I hate to see him leave. It says, you appointed a new business administrator and an assistant business administrator, unless I'm reading false information online.
All I'm saying is I don't see it on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
So.
Peek-a-boo, thank you.
Doesn't need to be on the agenda because they're both interim. We're not voting on it.
I don't know what she saw. Yeah, we don't get a vote on that, so. It is not there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, so that's it for public speakers on resolutions? Motion to close, public portion. All those in favor? Aye. So the consent agenda. CA 6.
A 3.
A 3.
And so.
All, anybody? We don't. Okay. So, yes, you're right.
CD 4.
What was it?
CD 4.
Okay.
Hold on.
All right, so Mr. Freina.
Give one second. Yep.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, so that, Mr. Freina, everything but CA 3, excuse me, A 3, CA 6, and CD 4. Freina, call the vote.
On the consent, Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour.
Yes.
President Zano.
Because I don't have a budget, I'm voting no on claims. Actually, I'm going to tell you what I'm voting yes on. How about that? I'm voting yes on payroll. I'm voting yes on CA 1, CA 2, CA 4, CA 5, CA 6, CA 8, CA 9, CD 2, CD 3, CD 5, CL 1, CL 2, and no to the rest. Point of order on one quick thing on the tax collector. I wanted to ask, the resolution authorizing assignment of certificate for Block 16537, there's no address. I think we passed an order, rules to put.
Yeah.
To put down.
Councilman, can you write those? Well, you heard the request from the clerk.
Yes, I'll take care of.
You can write that.
But on the tax collector, one of TX 1?
I believe it's 215 Park, was it? I asked somebody in the administration about this. This is the tax certificate?
From years ago. Two things, one, I think the rule is based on redevelopment projects. That's one, but two, I can get you the address of the exact location.
Okay, thank you, it's.
Mr. Quintero.
It's not a complete parcel, it's like a slice.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
No on CA 3 and 4, yes on the rest.
Okay. What's up first? A 3?
A 3.
A 3.
It's a resolution awarding a two-year contract to GRM in the not-to-exceed amount of $33,894.
It's not A 3.
That's not A 3.
That's, okay. Just getting warmed up. A resolution authorizing the city to enter into an MOA with the PSAOA regarding outside employment.
That's A 3.
Thank you, Council Vice President.
Thank you.
You're earning your money tonight. Do you think it's Councilwoman Fisher?
Yeah. We don't have to vote on this tonight. We, what this is for the public, we voted, the council voted, 5, 6, 2, to approve a contract with our PBA. Our PBA is the rank-and-file police officers. Majority of the police officers, about 100. Our table of organization allows for 110. We're probably close to 100, and we're hiring more. We voted on that on March 3rd, and it has a number of provisions in it that some of us feel are financially damaging to the cities in the future. But one of the provisions in that is this outside employment rate. So historically, we've paid, you know, when you see police officers wearing the yellow vests out there, when they're working at like construction sites and road closures, not navigating traffic, but the ones where they're almost, they're just ensuring no one like goes into an unsafe area with a road closed. The rate for that has been, for a long time, has been $80 an hour. And who pays that depends on what the project is. If it's a big, you know, private developer, you know, big construction where they have to close the road, the private developer pays that. If it is a water main project, that's the city, the city of Hoboken pays that, which means taxpayers pay that. And if they go beyond eight hours, they get time and a half, so it's $120 an hour. They're really big numbers. That's what we've had for, you know, a long time. What was negotiated into that contract is increasing that number from $80 an hour to $100 an hour, and the time and a half would go from $100 to $150 an hour. And for non-city property projects, that actually goes to $145 an hour as a starting rate. $145 an hour. So if there's a neighbor that, you know, has to replace their sewer, Phil, I think you, or Councilwoman Cohen, I think you had to do a sewer replacement at some point or a water replacement. When you have to have a street closed for that, you have to have a police officer be there the entire time the road's closed at $145 an hour. And if it goes beyond eight hours, it's time and a half. The rates are eye-popping, unconscionable, and we, Councilwoman President Zano, I don't know if he's going to speak or not, depending on what I say, but, you know, we looked at all of the surrounding towns, New York City, and they pay $75 an hour, $80 an hour. I mean, literally almost half of what we've put in here. So that's the contract we approved in March. What this is now is our superior officers. And the concern about the contract in March that we approved for the rank-and-file was that all of the increases that were approved there now are having our lower-ranking police officers making more money than our superiors. Now we're going to see a superiors' contract come in and ask to level up, right? They're going to want to see the same increases. They need to be paid more. They should be paid more, their superiors versus our rank-and-file. But because we approved this very expensive contract without any input, no financial analysis from the city, we now, this is the first time we're seeing a leveling up. And this is for the superiors now to be paid the same amount for their overtime pay. No one wants to not pay our police a fair wage, but we don't have to approve this tonight. I personally believe we should reopen the contract for the rank-and-file and change this and go back to the rate that it was. There's literally no reason to pay more. But we don't have to approve this tonight because we haven't seen the entire superior contract, which is going to come before us, and because we haven't changed our ordinance, which we have to do, the rates don't apply yet anyway. So I'm going to vote, literally, I'm not abstaining tonight. I abstained last time because we didn't know enough, but now we know enough. Now I'm just voting no. And I would hope that we could just vote no, and we could look at the entire superior contract, which should be coming, you know, in front of us in the next, you know, couple meetings after we get the budget. It sounds like we're officially getting the budget on the 24th, so let's look at the budget. Let's look at the superior contract. Let's not do this leveling up piecemeal. Let's be responsible for the residents of Hoboken. So I would ask my colleagues to consider either voting no or abstaining, just not supporting this tonight.
Yes, please. I think the devil's in the details a lot of times up here, and I like to. I take this very seriously when I look at the agenda and I read through everything that's in the ordinances. And I do my research. And, well, I trust the internet. However, sometimes I know that dates can be off and numbers can be off, but I got a variety of numbers when I looked at this. And just in Jersey City, the numbers are substantially lower. And it's not doubting on the job that our officers can do. I know we, well, some of you passed that I abstained on the contract. But the devil's in the details. And some of the concerns I have is, listening to Mayor Balla, he said, "We're on a hiring freeze. I'm taking a 10% cut in my salary. We're losing, we're getting COVID money clawed back. I don't see a budget in front of me." It's kind of put me in a tough position. I'm not seeing everything at once. And I don't want to take the words out of Councilwoman Fisher's mouth. However, when we vote on something, we should look at it all together. The contract's going to come from the PSOA, I believe, in the coming weeks, because that's due, or that's being negotiated. But when I take and look at some of these times and try to compare, some of it's very fuzzy. In certain counties or certain towns in Hudson County, it's just you have to dig, and you'd have to probably Oprah a lot of it. So at this point, I'm a no on this. And I'd like to see the budget, listening to exactly what the mayor told us in a letter that he sent to us that said, "We're going to have, I'm going to have to revisit the budget." So that's costs, and we need to look at this. But ultimately, this is something that, for non-city business, it's hitting our residents. So that's something I'd like to, we should be discussing as well.
It's hitting us too. Hitting us in all of the, all of the city projects that require the police officers, taxpayers pay for it, so.
All right. Mr. Freina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
No.
Mr. Jabour. President Zano.
Oh.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
CA 6.
CA 6. Resolution awarding a contract to Murray Paving in the amount of $530,430.93 for the installation of a press box at Mama Johnson Field, funded by CDBG.
Congressman Ramos.
Congressman Ramos.
Yep, just a, this was on the agenda, actually passed last year on the agenda, but the project wasn't done last year. I think it was the bidding process. Do we have a timeline for when the construction will begin on this? I don't know which director is here to answer that question. When it'll start, when we anticipate it ending?
Sure, so the press box itself is prefabricated, so there's actually a long lead time. So if we pass the dressers in tonight and we purchase it, it would be about 15 to 22 weeks before that would be delivered. And so we're looking at installation most likely this fall.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the bids are good this time as opposed to last year. Because last year, we had the same conversation last year. we had, we had the same conversation last year, it's coming in, and it didn't. So, hopefully, it's up.
Yeah, so, last year, we bid it, the project to convert the mailroom into the restroom. And so, those bids came in at 1.5 and 1 million, which substantially exceeded our budget for the project. And so, we pared it back just to the press box, to be able to fund just this portion, to get that done, as soon as we could.
Okay. Thank you.
Council President? Thank you, Director.
Yes. Just quickly, you know, I have the privilege of serving on this council, and on the Housing Authority as well. So, understanding the need for these renovations, the original intent was to not only do this press box, but as, as the director stated, to also do the bathrooms, converting the mailroom to the bathrooms. So, because of that differential, we knew we just didn't have enough money to do both. And this fell into a category where we had enough money allocated to complete a project that was already approved. So, that's why we're moving forward today. But it's something that is sorely needed for our Housing Authority residents, and for all the residents of the city of Hoboken, because we have that shared services agreement with the Housing Authority. So, it's something that I think we should all be in support of, and I hope that everyone votes for it here tonight. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Frina, call the vote on CH.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Yes.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
CD 4.
CD 4. Is... Resolution awarding a professional service contract to Atio Group, Inc., in the amount of $6,500 to prepare an appraisal for the properties located at 328 Clinton Street, block 52, lots 1801. I...
Paul.
President Zano?
Okay. Thank you.
Appraisal.
Oh, yeah. Can I, can somebody explain that one to me? Is this the one we brought back, or is this, this is a different one?
No, this is just an appraisal of the municipal garage, Midtown Garage property, so that we will know what it is valued at, should, in the future, we be engaged in...
So, question on that.
...to know what it's valued.
We have work being done there, right, on it? Right, we're going to, well, it was halted, due to the hospital evidently. My question is, the 40 million that was bonded for, that was for 916 and stuff in the garage, correct?
No, it's the garage.
No, it was, 30 of it was the garage.
We haven't been bonded for 916.
So, if we have to monitor, I don't know, if we're bonding 30 or 40 million dollars, whatever it was, I think it was 30, correct me if I'm wrong, 10 for...
I think it was 33 was the cost of the work, but...
Now it's probably 35.
Yeah. So, question here is, don't we have a value right there? It costs us to fix it? I mean, I...
You're saying the property is worth nothing?
Well, I don't know, but I mean, didn't we do anything to say whether it's easier to knock it down and rebuild it, versus, like, that's my question here. Like, why are we getting an appraisal on it?
Well, because I think...
Oh, this is related to the hospital? We got to get an appraisal, so we can sell it to the hospital, or whatever?
If we were to sell it, trade it, you know, have the value.
Yeah, I'm a no on this one.
Yeah, I, Council President.
We didn't even vote on the study yet, and we're already going for appraisals. Absolutely not.
Well, I think it's...
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Fisher?
So, for everyone's benefit, what we're talking about, this is the municipal garage in Midtown. The... We are, the new owners of the hospital are interested in redeveloping the area, potentially including our, where our Midtown garage is. There is a lot of, that has to go into this. There's a lot of, a lot of headlines that you're seeing. Everyone wants a shiny new hospital. I think we all want a nice hospital. There's some of us that are concerned that in this process, we'll actually lose the hospital. So, we're trying to figure out how to move forward, involve the right stakeholders, the county, the state, to make sure we have a hospital, we don't lose a really important asset that the city owns. But where we are now, we've had basically one conversation, and no information provided to us. So, the fact that we're considering doing, starting an appraisal now, to me, just seems a little early, and it seems like we should just carry it until, you know, we've met with them. They've not put anything on writing, they don't want to put anything on writing, at all. Oops, sorry. Their words, they don't want to be held to anything, and it just really feels like we need to have a little bit more bean on the bone, before the city even is looking at anything other than fixing the garage that 850 cars rely on. So, I know that there's no time sensitive to this at all, other than, some people are more eager to strike a deal and have a great headline, but I would like to see the brakes put on this, until we have just more information, so we're making the right decision, and we are not doing anything that is impeding our ability to have the right outcome for Hoboken residents. So, I'm, hopefully, we just can delay it, but I'm a no on this as well.
Council President? Councilwoman Russo?
Thank you, Council President. I, I just don't want to gloss over some of the statements of, everybody wants a shiny new hospital, and we might be rushing this to, like, I understand your positions. However, if we're going to pursue not just a shiny new hospital, but actually a hospital where the dignity of those patients and those employees would be elevated, the ability to have a world-class health system within our own borders, those are the things that I think are really important for us to consider. And to go into that conversation, whether we own the land, sell the land, lease the land, whatever that is, I think knowing what the value of that land is absolutely important to those negotiations and those conversations. For me, I don't ever remember anybody saying we were selling the land. I remember people talking about building a new hospital, and a new municipal parking garage, in addition to that hospital, on this site that we're talking about having appraised. I think it's really important for us not to lose sight of the massive concerns our residents have when it comes to our healthcare system. We've all heard it. I know everyone in this room has heard it before. Don't go to St. Mary's, don't go to CarePoint, don't go to Hoboken University Medical Center, because I know too many people that went and never came out. We've all heard those comments, and we've all heard those comments because of the actual facility, and the age of that facility. So, we have an opportunity now to solve a problem that the city has when it comes to our parking garage, and a problem that the city of Hoboken has when it comes to our healthcare system. It's not just a hospital, believe me. For many in this city, that emergency room is their only access to healthcare. They don't have the privilege that others have to go to a doctor when their children are sick. Those are the things that we need to explore. If we want to be a world-class city, we need to have world-class healthcare for our residents and our employees. So, getting information from an appraisal is not a bad thing. And when we talk about the cost for that appraisal, we're not talking about percentages of our budget. We're talking about a drop in the bucket. I think it is absolutely imperative for every one of us to support this tonight, so we have the information going into those conversations. We may turn around and say, "We don't want to do it. It's not the right thing for the city," or structure it a different way. But if we don't have that information, we're flying blind. And I think it's really important that we don't fly blind on this. So, I'm supportive of it tonight. I hope both of you would change your position on that. Again, because we're not talking about 10% of our budget, talking about a small-dollar amount in comparison. And I think it's really important for us to have that information. So, I hope you would change your mind. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Councilman Quintero? And then, Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Council President. I think it's important not to overcomplicate this issue, and go too far down the road. Yeah, information is key. We sit on a lot of assets in the city, some we acquired recently, so we may know how much they cost, and some we've been sitting on for a long time, and we're not sure. Opportunities arise, whether it be to build something new, or trade land, or whatever. And it's difficult for us to go into those informed decisions without the data in front of us. We've been sitting on this garage for a really long time, and there could be an opportunity here to do something interesting. We don't know, we're not going to speculate on that. But before we go into those conversations, we should have as much information as to what is the value of the thing that we're sitting on, so we can go in eyes wide open. I think we had an opportunity a, a couple of months ago, to do an appraisal on some land we acquired next to the fire department, and we turned that down for similar reasons. Why are we doing this now? There's a deal already, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. In that instance, it was because we acquired two separate parcels, and we knew what they were worth individually, but we didn't know what it was as a whole. And we wanted to have that information, so that we could then make decisions down the road as, as those opportunities arose. And so, that's what we're doing here, again, hopefully, is going and grabbing, engaging in the exercise, so that somebody can evaluate what it is this thing that we have is worth, so that we can make an informed decision on that in the next steps. So, I will be supportive, and I hope others support it as well.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I've heard people at this day say that cities going into transactions and making, excuse me, that, I've heard that there are transactions the city was going into, where the city didn't really understand what the business interests were, hadn't done adequate pro formas, hadn't done adequate assessments to understand what it is we're negotiating. To be, to put a point on what Councilman Russo said, this is a $6,500 appraisal that we're voting on, $6,500. And with that, we'll have an important piece of information that will allow us to enter into a possible decision-making process, which seems to be coming sooner rather than later. And not only are we talking about getting a new garage, where we have significant structural issues, that this council has already authorized spending money on a bond, and it may be that this transaction that's being discussed might be an alternative way of funding that we don't know. But that's something that, that was one of the reasons we hit the pause button on it. But there's also discussions going on right now, about possible new school facility that's being discussed as part of this transaction as well. So...
It's off.
That's off? Well...
It was on, it was on, it's off.
Possible. Is it possible?
It's okay.
Yes. So, there are possible discussions at that as well. In any case, these are all issues that are coming at the council and the administration, and there are active discussions about these issues going on in real time. And we're all learning about them , and I learned, their status of the school situation, which was moving last week, may not be this week. But, you know, we don't know, maybe next week it'll be different. I don't know. But one thing we do know, is that the piece of land that we're talking about, in the middle of all this, is our garage. And that garage is not going anywhere. So, it is valuable information for us to know, what is the value of that, so that the city can intelligently negotiate a deal that protects the interests of the taxpayers. And I also want to emphasize with respect to the hospital, the reference to a shiny new hospital, there are a lot of, a lot of councils, a lot of mayors, have worked really hard to keep that hospital open. Mayor Roberts, Mayor Russo, Mayor Zimmer, Mayor Bala, and many, many councils here, Ruben and Michael have been on a number of them, have gone through many long, hard nights, trying to figure out a way to keep that hospital open. And it's not just about having an emergency room, which saved the life of one of my colleague's sons, just a few weeks ago, who told me about how his throat seized up, an allergic reaction. He was administered steroids, and was, spent the night, and was back in school the next day, doing fine. I don't know what would have happened if we didn't have an emergency room to save my colleague's son that night. But it's not just the primary care, it's the jobs for people who live in this city, people who are dedicated healthcare professionals, who serve our community every day, people who served our community through the pandemic, the people when we were banging our pots and pans at 5 o'clock, every day, for months, thanking our first responders and healthcare workers. So, this is important, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't underestimate the importance of keeping a viable medical facility in our city. A lot of people worked hard and long on it, and if this is a piece of information that will help us intelligently approach this negotiation, I think we all should support it. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief. We had a meeting with the representatives of the hospital, four council members, Councilwoman Fisher, Councilwoman Jabor, Councilman Quintero, myself, representatives of the hospital, representatives of the administration. And in that conversation, we requested a number of items from the hospital representatives. The Councilwoman Fisher alluded to that earlier. They, and they were not comfortable putting things in writing, because things, things change, may change throughout the process, which is somewhat understandable. But as we, if we're going to continue that process, leaving that meeting, was another meeting was going to happen tomorrow, but maybe we should pause that one, actually, is, is, I would like to go on that meeting, armed with a little more information from our end of it, and seeing that, whatever conversations we do have, we're getting the true value of what we're discussing, the conversations we're having, what is being negotiated to do in the future, what type of hospital they're looking at, was one of the things we requested from them, what type of care they want to provide in that hospital, rather, was being requested. So, this is one thing that, when we have those conversations, and the value may be switched, not being switched, I want to make sure that we're armed with that information as we have that conversation, not voting yes to do everything, but if we're going to have conversations, we should have the proper information, to make sure that we're saying the right things and doing the right things, from a financial perspective, as we move this process forward, or the conversations forward, not even the process. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Council President, this is your world. So, just run through the process. If somebody, potentially, we're going to do a redevelopment zone, we first, we first vote on a study, correct?
This has nothing to do with...
No, no, I got that. I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
We first vote on a study to look at the area, to see if there's a chance.
To see whether it can be, should be designated.
Correct. So, how long does that usually take?
Month and a half, two months.
Okay, and we're, that is potentially, May 7, maybe it gets on an agenda, it sounds like, I don't know. So...
I don't, I don't, well, you're asking me...
No, no, I'm just asking...
It may never happen, or it may start on the 7th.
Thank you for saying it may never happen. Not, going to take what you said. But however, if it may not ever happen, and we don't know if this is going to happen, why are we authorizing to spend money when we haven't even got to the point where we voted on whether there is going to be a study? If I'm just finding out the cost of, or the value of our lands, Mayor Bala said, "I'm going to cut 10% of my salary," that's $10,000, or roughly $12. But, at the same point, if saying that $6,500 is not important, the mayor's asking us to take cuts of our salary 10%, which is $3,500. So, every penny counts here. I want to make sure that we're not putting the cart before the horse here. That's all I'm bringing in. It's nothing about a hospital, or whether I want it, or we don't want it, or that we need it in the community. This is about just going through the process. I've said this from day one since I sat in this seat. It's the process, and we're going at a line on the process. That's, that's my only point that I'm bringing up here.
All right. Thank you. Do you want to rebut, or...
No, I could, I, I could just give a similar process, like the Housing Authority tonight, for example, right? Tonight, we're incorporating it to a redevelopment plan. Where we started that process was appraising the property, having conversations with the Housing Authority, if, if, if it would speed up their plan moving forward. So, that's how we started that process. Okay, if we're going to negotiate this, what is the, the value that we have here on Second and Harrison Street? So, that's how we started that process, and ending it, and seeing it to the next step tonight, including it in the redevelopment plan. So, that's how we started that. So, this may be similar to that, where you say, "Hey, we're not doing anything." In this case, we want to see, we go, work with the Housing Authority, and it may say, the House of people say, "No, what, we're walking away from this, not having it." At least we had that information for those conversations, and that, and that's, that's it.
Council President?
All right. Thank you.
Council President?
Come...
I get a second chance.
No, you don't, but you may have that.
I think Robert's Rule says, after everyone talks, I get, I get to...
Go ahead.
All right.
I don't think, I don't think he's talked.
What?
I don't think Councilwoman...
Oh, go ahead. If other, no, if everyone, I thought everyone was done. If, I'll wait.
Yeah, I just want to add, you know...
What, he gets to go second?
I just wanted to...
I just asked you if you wanted to let him go first, and you said yes.
Got it, sorry.
You know, to, to Councilman President Zano, the process is newer, right? It's, you're a newly-elected councilperson, but if you look at this in totality, I've had the privilege of serving on the Hospital Authority, and we had conversations about appraising all these properties for a long time, because we thought at some point, we might have to do something before CarePoint did something other than what they're doing now, right? So, this has been not just a few months, not just a few years, this has been a very long time, when it comes to making sure that our hospital is a viable hospital in the city of Hoboken. I mean, we actually purchased the property, we created a municipal hospital authority years ago, we ran the day-to-day operations as a municipality, right? We had an executive director that the Municipal Hospital Authority hired to manage the hospital. We then sold it to CarePoint, and CarePoint got into a situation that We then sold it to CarePoint, and CarePoint got into a situation that they're in, we were worried about, are they the right manager for that hospital? The Hospital Authority was recreated, and we talked about this for a long time. So I understand your point, from your perspective, and each of our own perspectives is our reality, but from your perspective, it's a fairly new process. From some of our perspectives, this has been an ongoing saga for years, trying to protect hundreds of workers that live in the city of Hoboken, trying to protect hundreds, if not thousands, of residents that rely on that hospital daily for their healthcare needs. So it's not just, it's not just $6,500 for an appraisal. There's a bigger picture here, and I think that's why you get this differential in how people are approaching it. So I just wanted to add that to your, give you a little color on that.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman.
So I'll add the ending, or more to Councilman Russo's narrative. For the last year, I'm on the board of the Hoboken Hospital. Council President Doyle was on it for a few years before that. And for the last year, before they went into bankruptcy, it's been harrowing. And it's not because, I'm as concerned as Councilman Russo with all of the workers that are there, I'm as concerned about, you know, the service and care that they desperately want to provide to Hoboken and to the surrounding area. It's not really a Hoboken hospital, it sits in Hoboken, but 25% of the patients that go there are from Hoboken, the other 75% are from Union City, Jersey City, et cetera. So it's really a county safety net hospital. They, in Christ, they're critically important to our region. I've had conversations with Governor Murphy, I've had conversations with our county executive a dozen, with our state senator, with the state senator and mayor of Union City, on how we make sure we save this hospital. So the first thing is, we need to feel like we are doing everything we can, and we have all of the safeguards to make sure that the end result is there's a hospital there. And I've worked really hard, and it's been very frustrating because there's a lot of politics around this, continuing though the chronological history, you know, over the last 20 years to where we are now. You know, CarePoint got into trouble because it was run as a for-profit hospital system, and the prior owners just sucked all of the value out. They took all of the profits out, they didn't invest in the hospital, they sold off the land, and they've left this incredibly large liability with this hospital system. The new hospital owners are for-profit, they're going to run it for profit as well. A number of the senior executives actually worked at CarePoint at the time, so they have muscle memory for what was done wrong last time, and they've successfully turned around a hospital in Secaucus, but they're developers. Part of what we're talking about here that no one's mentioning is in this, is redeveloping the hospital with, I don't know, 10, 20, 25-story residential development in the middle of Hoboken. And they need to do that and monetize that first in order to pay for the new hospital. So when we met with them, and we talked about this, my background's in real estate finance, you know, they didn't put forward any plausible, deliverable ability, even a framework that was viable in order to successfully raise the money without taking the hospital down first so they can build the new hospital. They just didn't. They didn't put anything on paper. Now, they may be able to get there, they absolutely, and I want them to get there for all the reasons that everyone is talking about right now, because right now, there's no Plan B. This is the only plan we have. So for me, my concern is, before we jump into this and race, we should have all of the stakeholders, we should have lawyers. I've asked colleagues, why don't we have inexperienced land use, all the lawyers that we need, so we can understand this? Why aren't we meeting with the county? It's a county hospital. Why aren't we talking with the Department of Health to say, what are we doing to make sure, to make sure these hospitals do not close for a minute? Because if they close, they can't reopen. And to what Councilman Cohen just said, we desperately need to keep a hospital in Hoboken. And even if people don't want to use it for, you know, they don't want to get their knee scoped there, they want to go to, you know, a different location, when you have an emergency, like your colleague's son, do you want to be in an ambulance and go for an hour to, on a Friday night, going through Lincoln Tunnel traffic, Holland Tunnel traffic, getting to Jersey City Medical, getting to Palisades? No, you want to be able to go to a hospital in your town that's five minutes away. And the other thing I would say is, this hospital, and I'm going to look at Councilman Russo and Councilman Ramos, this hospital serves our Housing Authority, it serves people that have maybe less options for medical care, and we have a real risk. If we don't do our due diligence, if we don't know exactly what we need to do and demand to keep these hospitals open, we have an owner that is financially incentivized not to keep it open. It's just that simple. They want to be in the hospital business for a long time, they've told us that, I want to believe them, but you don't structure deals around hopes, you structure deals around, you know, making sure that you have everything in place for your downside. We need to structure for the downside here, not structure for the upside. So to me, you know, it's interesting, we met with them, and they have a lot of great ideas, and we'd love to do what we can to understand it. All we ask for them is to put things in writing, and even if it changes, let it change, who cares? Say, this is what it was today, and if a month later it changes, then come back and say it's changing. So they won't give us anything in writing, yet we're going to do an appraisal. You know what's in an appraisal, even if it's only $6,000, but you know what's in an appraisal? A valuation for our property that is luxury residential, with assumptions around what those rents are, et cetera. Suddenly, there are things in writing that we can't take back. We have an idea, we can come up with an idea of the value of this property, and it's just an order of magnitude. This is a billion dollars that we're talking about. This property is probably 20 million, and if we're off two or three right now, doesn't matter, it's an order of magnitude. We don't need to do this tonight. What we need to do is make sure we're doing everything we can to ensure that we have a hospital. For jobs, for everything that everyone said tonight, so I'm still a no. I would love to just wait on this, let's have the meeting tomorrow, let's get more information, let's feel like we're on more better firm ground and go from there.
This is only an appraisal. Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Sanno?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Ordinances for introduction. Excuse me. An ordinance amending Chapter 192, parking for persons with disabilities.
I didn't pull it to talk, we just voted on it.
Mr. Cohen?
I'm sorry. I thought there was more to it. Please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Sanno?
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Mr. Farina?
I'm sorry. Aye.
Did I piss you off?
You coughed during his vote.
Hi. Thank you. Introduction, an ordinance amending Chapter 190-11, entitled "Loading Zones Designated to Extend Hours of Loading Zones on Hudson Street Between 14th Street and 15th Street." Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
Mr. President Sanno?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Orders for introduction, orders amending, supplementing, and orders establishing a schedule of classifications and allocations for the herein mentioned positions for the city of Hoboken.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Sanno?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
No.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Orders for introduction, an ordinance amending Chapter 144, land use procedures.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Sanno?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Resolution, CD 7?
CD 7 with regard to referring the ordinance, Chapter 44, to the planning board for review and recommendation. Please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Sanno?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Sign up sheet.
New business, a public portion?
Well, are we going to do public portion, and then? Thank you. Manuel Rivera Soler?
I'll be right back. My wife's staying home from work. Four of us in the house.
Manuel Rivera Soler, thank you, Council President, once again, for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to do two clarifications that I missed when we were talking. I would like to say CA 6, the Mama Johnson Field, that that is the proper use for the CDBG grants, and I followed the procedure there, I was at those meetings, and it is very important as well as including the bathrooms, as Councilmember Russo mentioned. Those are the things, when I come up and ask for grants and stuff, where is the money, where does it go in? It's because I want to follow the projects, but this one was meritorious. Also, I would like to ask Council President of the Council and the administration to please straighten out whatever was missing from B 747 and B 752. These are our public servants, these are the people who protect us and serve our community. We need to straighten out, as council members were speaking, whether it's salaries, whether it's rank, whatever it is, it needs to come back, it needs to be fixed, it needs to be voted on, and the public safety community deserves our respect and any attention we could give them. With that being said, Council President, I will proceed to my personal remarks here. Again, in regards to the rabbit hole we were going, in regards to the hospital, hospital is very important. I was born in the hospital. I'm not going to say the years, but it was many, many, many years ago, it wasn't the present location that it is now, so that'll tell you a little bit how old I am. But the hospital is important. I, as a member of the public, as an advocate, will advocate for it to stay in whatever form it is, it's going to be replaced, it's going to be revamped, but we will not, as a community, relinquish the hospital. We deserve a hospital, we're developing all around it, and yet we cannot, as was mentioned, have a state-of-the-art hospital, which, by the way, does serve the seniors. Again, personal experience, if my brother would not have gone to that hospital, he would have passed sooner, even though he did pass nonetheless, but he was maybe four blocks away. So that's why that's important, just to put it into a personal perspective, so people could see how important that is. Again, appraisal, no appraisal, we need to know that our hospital is going to be protected by all of you, by the mayor who's present in the office now, by the incoming mayor, whoever he or she may be, know that it is a priority for members of the public. And Council President, my time is ticking, so I will say this, and I will also be saying some words in Espanol, but I will try to summarize it. But I'm going to start off by saying, last week, there was a tragic event catastrophic for the city of Santo Domingo in the Dominican Republic. I would hope that we, as a community, could be solidarius with them and send our condolences sincerely and to the Dominican community of Hoboken, who may have been affected by the collapse of a discotheque that happened, I don't know if Council President is aware, but I hope that we can send collectively our thoughts and prayers to them and to the families who were affected, as well as the family who was affected from the, again, horrific helicopter crash, who were visiting from España. We also would hope that their families can know that we, though we are not in the city, but we feel and send, again, our condolences. En español, Council President, a todas las personas afectadas por la tragedia en la República Dominicana, de parte mía como ciudadano, y espero del consejo que le enviamos nuestro más sentido, pésame, y sentimos mucho su dolor como comunidad, y la comunidad de Hoboken Dominicana estamos con ustedes. So, Council President, to summarize, it was what I said in English, and as well, a las personas afectadas del trágico accidente de la nave que estrelló en el río Hudson, también enviamos a las personas en España nuestro más sentido, pésame, a toda la familia afectada, y al piloto que también estuvo en la nave. I was speaking of the helicopter crash in Spanish, and also mentioned the pilot. And I see my time is up, so anyway, Council President, I thank you for listening, thank you all. Slava, Ukraine, herojem slava, and God bless you, and God bless you, Hoboken. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. Pat Waiters?
What's on next? I'm not cutting in front of the students.
You are next, yep.
Thank you, Council President, for recognizing me. Well, mine's is bittersweet, number one. You forgot to mention when Councilman Cohen mentioned all the other mayors that was here fighting for this hospital. I'm not going to keep standing up here every day, I come to the meeting and tell you, 27 years with me and Mo DiGennaro sitting at this front seat, and me and Michelle Russo sitting at the backseat. Any tragedy, anything that took place in Hoboken, I was here. So even if you don't include me or recognize me, I do what I do for a reason, that's why I'm still here. I don't have to grandstand, I don't have to sweat votes, I don't have to fight for who is doing this, and then every day we come into these meetings, up to the next six months, we got to watch a debate. Everybody that's running for mayor, again, I'm going to tell you, people are watching. Don't do it here on our time, it's very disrespectful, y'all should bring back a caucus, too, because there's a lot of issues that we want to cover, too. And Paul, Council President, my heart go out to you now, I will never be mean to you again, because to see you on every board, when I go to the zoning, when I go to the planning, and you're there to serve us, the community, you do it in a professional manner. I wanted to put that on the record, too, since y'all always think that I'm up here to say negative. With that being said, with an election approaching, $6,500 is a lot of money. I'm watching every contract, every penny, what go into whose campaign. So this is why we puzzled, we not saying we don't need a hospital, yes, we do need a hospital. And I took that a little offensive when Ms. Fisher said, oh, because the people in the HHA use it. Again, y'all, please stop doing that on the backs of the vulnerable people, that's the forgotten people, that every time an issue come up, y'all say the HHA. Now, if you watched the last border education meeting, the young president, council trustee said the same thing to me, oh, you should be happy, people like you that's getting this grant money or from a non-for-profit, stop singling black people out in Hoboken, stop singling the HHA out for everything. The last victim I known that got shot went to Medical Center. Since you want to say HHA is five blocks away, they went to Medical Center. So be careful what you say, people vote, all of y'all acting like y'all so concerned, it just seems so disingenuine to me. It take every ounce of my being to sit on that front row and everybody acting like they care all of a sudden. Now, back to the business administrator, I hope that's what you mean, I circled the CD 3 about jobs, because it didn't mention the job, so I just circled it. Right here for appointed jobs, positions, you see it, number three? Is that the business administration job? You don't be specific what job it is, it just says job, number three, Paul.
CD 3, is that what you're?
No, number three.
Number three, secondary and final reading.
Ordinances, number three. I put three questions. I put three question marks here.
First reading.
Yes, first reading. Because from what I'm hearing.
It is not that.
It is that.
It is not that.
Okay, so can we still talk about that? Because the business administrator position.
Talk about whatever you like.
Is a very serious position that conduct and run all the business in our city. So we got to stop playing who's friend to who and who's not. Each and every one of you, you know who you are. I'm not going to say no names to embarrass you. Support it, Mayor Balla. It's not time to blame Mayor Balla for nothing, because it happened. We got six more months to tolerate it. Stop playing these dirty little games, because the residents is the one being impacted. Now, with that being said, the business administrator simply just mysteriously leaving. Jason, my heart go out to you. I don't know if you doing this on your own free will, but I know we need a business administrator to conduct the business in this city. A young man walked up here tonight, and if the Council President didn't identify him as the director, I'm like, who is that? Where he come from? I know I'll be here at every meeting straight for twenty-seven years. The way you running our city is not fair to the residents like me that live here. And I'm being stopped everywhere. Pat, what are we going to do? I'm trying everything in my being to support somebody instead of me running myself. It's sitting up here and it's getting nerve-wracking. Respect us, respect the taxpayer. No, it's not Donald Trump's legislation. What it is, is y'all took advantage of the COVID money, like I've been saying, took advantage of all of those grants, taking advantage, still having virtual meetings, and blame-playing place to blame. Please stop. Take us into consideration. Now, I want to know, who do we go to if we not comfortable with the mayor's legislation? It's right here, the government body. Why y'all not speaking up? I'm blaming each and every one of you to hold Ravi accountable. Please, we only got six months to go. You pushing all kinds of contracts and legislation and pushing people out of their jobs and cutting backdoor deals, which is unethical and illegal. Please, somebody answer me, and I'm serious, because I'm not impressed with none of y'all, with none of your speeches, none of your experiences. We don't care. Take care of us now and stop seeking power. Think about the people. This is going to be my last time again saying it. I'm not missing another meeting, and I'm going to be right here and be involved. And then, I'm going to put on my Vote for Patricia Waiters shirt, because I'm here to serve the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters. Kevin Davis.
So I came tonight to speak about my concerns with the proposal to increase the amount of police officers in town. So the good news is for the council is I have fewer biting remarks about it. But it's going to come up again in the future. So I was thinking is, and it's nothing against the police department. I had a situation where I was a victim of a crime, and I had to go to the police department, and they were really good. I think the issue is that we need to take a zero-based view and look at the structure. And I think what we need is a police efficiency study, where we get somebody who's an independent expert, who's not tied to the city, to look at our police department and how many officers we have and how they're deployed to determine what the right number is and where to put them. Now, it got me thinking, because one year ago, at this very podium, a wise person went up here and said, just because you're loud doesn't mean you're right. And that made me think, well, just because you're quiet doesn't mean you're effective. And, you know, we need to rethink what we're doing and where we're going, because we're about to make a major decision on the city budget, and the city budget isn't even out yet. So we don't even, I mean, thankfully, it got, I don't know the word. It wasn't tabled, it carried. But just like a groundhog, it can come up from the ground again. And maybe we should, we should take a new look, because right now, under the Balla administration, the city is a sinking ship. So the Chief of Staff is gone, the business administrator is leaving, the Transportation Director is gone. Well, sort of, he came back with the homeboy hookup as a consultant. Those weren't my words, those were Councilman Ramos, because normally I come up with the most clever stuff, but he beat me to the punch. And I remember when we were here pushing for the city to adopt an ordinance to require licensing for delivery bikers. Take a test, wear a vest. And in my opinion, the response was, take a nap, ignore the crap. And there's only two times, yes, take a nap, ignore the crap. And there's only two times where people wake up from the nap. The first is when people are angry at a CAPS meeting about e-bikes on sidewalks, running red lights. The city, the police department will come out in full force and start giving tickets. And then, people go into City Hall and they get the vests. And then, when people quiet down, it goes back to the mischigasm before. So that's the first time after the CAPS forum. Second time is right before an election. So the good news is this year, we have three elections. So that means a lot of mudslinging, that's the bad part. But the good part is, maybe we'll get some more enforcement on the issues with e-bikes not complying with the rules of the road. So the first one is going to be, we're going to have a June primary. And because the mayor is running for Assembly, he doesn't want the city to look bad in the lead-up to it. So I'm going to predict that after Memorial Day, we're going to see more police tents set up and bikers running red lights being pulled over. And that's going to go on until June 10th. Then people are going to forget about it, because the election's over. And then, Labor Day is going to come up. September 2025, I brought this up in December, that in September 2025, we're going to see more enforcement. So then, we're going to see a pickup in September, leading up until Election Day. Candidates running for office say, don't worry, things are changing. Look at this latest thing I'm attacking. Look at my fancy flyer. Then we're going to have the runoff in December. It's going to happen again. And then, we're going to go back to take a nap, ignore the crap. Unless we look at a police efficiency study to see what the right structure is. The reason I bring this up is because the police said, you know what? We can't do this without twenty, thirty more officers. And what do we see now? Twenty-eight officers being proposed. So to me, it doesn't even matter if you have a thousand officers. The National Guard, Jake Gyllenhaal, you can have it all. But if the city doesn't make it a priority, it's not going to happen. So it's time to stop, it's time to stop with take a nap, ignore the crap.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Enrique Carrera.
How's it going, guys? I just wanted to dedicate this specific public portions to psychological operations and how it's conducted. It's unconstitutional, and it goes against the Smith-Month Act of 1945, I believe. It's very, very old, but it involves psychological operations on a local, state, and federal level that are violations of an American citizen's right to fair trial. Figure-it-out technology, whatever, internal, external technology utilized to gather any intel with the intent to shift opinion of any known individual or any minority group or anything is, it's not cool. It's also against the law, which is something I was able to figure out and actually put into words. It leads to domestic psy-op failure, and casualties follow. Effective prosecution of this behavior involves, it requires navigation of complex evidence, jurisdictional boundaries, and constitutional safeguards. That type of, we have, you know, working around it. It does take a lot of time, a lot of effort. But if it's discreet with haste or it's like conducted properly in a group setting, we can eliminate that type of behavior and save people from the cause, or like the victims of that, which involve people in psychiatric wards who are depressed, who become crazy, because they realize they're like walking in streets of people who are just monitoring their behavior with any intent, good, bad, evil, whatever. I started really looking into that, because I, myself, on a work environment scale, and while I was under Secret Service watch, I experienced that type of behavior. And that is regulated. When I started looking at that behavior amongst the locals and how it's like conducted, it is, it does leave room for error. You end up entering a world of people who are waiting for you just to judge you for any which reason. If I have been estranged from anyone, it was deliberate with the effect of deliberate naivete, I don't know what you're talking about. We just go back to living our lives in a circle around you, and you're just that one guy walking around. So it is safe to say that to utilize that act and say if there is a, if there was a violation, it would be present around us if any civilians are engaged on a local level. If it's not conducted with military service members, you are, in effect, using this type of education curriculum as a crime. It's illegal. It's like really screwed up. I, let me see, I have also more psy-op. And again, that just goes into my public on social media, citizens warrant arrest involving that numbered, neural link, human enforced behavior of whether or not you're a friend or not, you know, that stuff. But I'm just going to cut it short. That was pretty much what I wanted to talk about today, just getting in and out of this one. So you guys have a great day, and I'll see you in the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. No more members of the public have signed up to speak?
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
New business?
New business. We have two items in new business?
Yes. CL three, a resolution, the City Council, City of Hoboken, authorizing the urgent item to be included on the agenda after deadlines set forth in the City Council Rules Procedures, sponsored by.
This pertains to CL four. So, Mr. Farina, call the vote.
Congresswoman?
Would you like to discuss it?
Yeah. Just briefly, one of the first speakers came up and spoke about the tragedy of the helicopter accident that happened last Thursday. And this is an emergency that we're presenting to the council. Councilman President Zano and I worked on this, calling on the FAA and other relevant federal agencies to immediately prohibit helicopter traffic over and near residential areas of Hoboken and Jersey City. Before I say anything more, I would just ask that we have a moment of silence for the passengers and the pilot on that plane. Shawn Johnson, 36, was a Navy SEAL veteran. Augustin Escobar, 49 years old. Mersey Camprouby Montal, his wife, 40, and their three children. Augustin, 10, Mercedes, 8, and Victor, 4. Friday would have been Mercedes's ninth birthday. I'd ask for you to have a moment of silence for this family and this pilot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
What's particularly upsetting about this is that this is not a new issue. This is something that I've brought before this council. This council has unanimously asked for the FAA to act on this. Mayor Balla and I have written the FAA and got no response when they talked about changing flight paths near the Statue of Liberty to protect, remember this, that the FAA proposed changing routes so that visitors to the Statue of Liberty would not be disturbed by overhead helicopters. And they were going to route them closer to our communities. We, and, I mean, that was galling. Got no response from the FAA on that. Congressman Menendez has entered into legislation. Congressman Syrah is before him. Congressman Nadler in New York, Congressman Ocasio-Cortez, Congressman Velazquez, been working with Gail Brewer, who was a former Manhattan Borough President, who was on the phone with me the afternoon that they were trying to get the bodies out of the water. She was calling me from New York to talk about this issue. The flight that crashed tragically, and they still don't know why. They're investigating the causes of it. One of the theories has been mentioned is that it might have hit a drone or something that was flying. There are so many objects in the air, and these are low-flying vehicles. I've, I had a resident, I know Paul has it well, sent me videos of images from his living room where he feels like 50 flights a day are coming to his house, and he's actively considering moving out of Hoboken, because he cannot take the anxiety of having these planes come through our community on low-level heights. I've had meetings with Jeff Hyman, who is the operator of the Carney heliport. There were some references to the Carney heliport about possibly changing routes. But basically, when you change a route, you're just moving a flight path from one neighborhood to another. Whatever representations that have been made about the fact that these flights could be put over highways or over waterways, inevitably, the pilots will take shortcuts and cut the angle in a way that's quickest. And right now, it seems to be going over Sixth Street and Six and Hudson. I mean, that, that seems to be the place. That's what we're hearing. But it hasn't always been Six and Hudson, it's been other neighborhoods as well. These, these are low-flying vehicles, low, they're, they belch diesel. They, they make windows vibrate in people's homes. They are an absolute menace. After 9/11, the FAA decided that they would ban helicopter traffic over Disneyland for fear of terrorism. And to this day, you cannot fly helicopters over Disneyland. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not a tourist attraction. I know that tourists come here and they want to see the skyline. And, and one of the things that have been advertised by Flying Ion is doors, no doors, shoes off selfies, okay? You can, so when you fly, you can lean out for your selfie, and there's no helicopter door to impede your great selfie picture. We are not a tourist attraction. This is where we live. This is where we raise our families. We have our conference calls with work when we're from home, and people are saying that they're being disturbed by them. It is time. And one other thing, and it's in this resolution. When the tragedy happened in January, when the helicopter at National Airport struck the passenger, commercial airliner, and I believe over 60 people were killed, that immediately, the FAA shut down helicopter traffic in that area while they investigated the source. That hasn't happened here. Helicopter traffic continues to happen. This resolution calls for the FAA and other, and we also call on New York City, has two heliports. One New York City heliport has 30,000 tourist helicopters every year from one heliport operated by New York City. If the FAA doesn't act, we ask that Mayor Adams and the New York Economic Development Corporation take action and do that. There's also a heliport in New York that's operated by a riverfront trust. We ask that trust to immediately suspend non-essential. For journalism, it's fine. For police, it's fine. We're not, we don't have a problem with that. But for non-essential tourist traffic, for people who are commuting into New York and don't want to sit in the Lincoln Tunnel, and they want to take a flight from Newark Airport to a heliport, where they're going out to the Hamptons, and, and they don't want to sit in the traffic like everybody else, taking these commuter flights are a menace to our community. They absolutely are. The economic impact of these flights is de minimis, and there are millions of people whose lives are being adversely affected. So I want to, I want to thank Councilman President Zano, who contacted me on Friday, and we, and we worked to, worked on this together. And it's never been a controversial issue in this council. Whenever this issue's come up, we've, we've gotten unanimous support. A similar resolution that we introduced was almost verbatim adopted by the Hudson County Board of Commissioners. They've been supportive, Greg Guy, Todd Ajeez before him. It's never been a problem. But, but, and even when, and they're, and one of the things we ask for is that there's legislation that isn't Trenton right now. There's an Assembly Bill, A 1371, that would restrict sightseeing helicopters from using New Jersey heliports. That's pending. We urge that committee, and one of the things to act, and we will be sending this resolution to that committee. But one of the things that we've heard is that even if well-intended legislation goes through Trenton, that this is preempted, because these are federal skyways. And even though these are New Jersey-owned heliports, that the state, even if it passes legislation like this, it will inevitably be challenged in court, and we don't know how successful. And we've talked about passing well-intended legislation but being preempted. Well, that can happen at the state level as well. So ultimately, it's up to the FAA to act. And it seems like New York helicopter, the operator of this heliport, has been put out of business. It's not clear. There was a statement made on X yesterday. It's unclear whether it's permanently out of business, temporarily out of business, but they're, they're not operating right now. We don't know what's going to happen. And I think it was a two-tweet statement that was issued on X. So there's not a lot of clarity or insight as to what they're doing. Maybe they, maybe they've been unimpressed with, with the investigation up to this point. But, but the emphasis here is on the FAA. So we, I think that New York City should do what it can do. The New York, the state of New Jersey, Governor Murphy, the legislature should do what it can do. But this is a matter of life and death, and it's a matter of quality of life. We talk about quality of life on this council a lot. But for people who we represent, people, and Jersey City is also mentioned here, people who live in the Heights. mentioned here, people who live in the Heights, people who live in Newport, our neighbors, you know, they're that much closer to the, to the helicopters because of the elevation of their homes. This is for them, too. This is for them, too. So, Hoboken and Jersey City are featured in this. We're calling on the FAA to act immediately. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Before you do, I just want to make clear, when I was calling the vote, I was calling it on the emergency resolution. So, I wasn't meaning to rush through this. But maybe we can do them together at this point.
Um, Councilman Cohen, do you know what, like, in all the, and you've been advocating for this for years. Like, what, what is the obstacle? I know it's broadly the FAA, but is it like lobbyists? Like, do you have a sense of like what you're fighting against?
It's lobbyists.
It's lobbyists.
The most connected, most powerful lobbyists work for, I'll give you an example. There was similar legislation that was pending in front of the Senate Transportation Committee. Hearing was scheduled. I was in touch with the leaders of Friends of Liberty State Park. They were ready to testify and ready to go. And the day before the hearing, it was canceled. And, and the answer was clear, that the lobbyists had basically shut down the vote. So, it, so they're connected, they're active, you know. I don't, I don't know whether it's the tourist operators or whether it's the captains of industry who don't want to, you know, lose their commuting helicopters.
I bet you it's that.
It's more likely the latter.
It's more likely the commuting. When you, when you said like shutting those down, like I can only imagine the calls that they all made.
It could be. But, but in any event, the, the few people who benefit from these flights are absolutely abusing millions and millions of people who live below them. But one of, one of the examples that I hear about a lot in New York City is of people who go to Shakespeare in the Park and Central Park, and you get the helicopters that like to hover over Central Park as part of their route before they go back to their spot. And the people can't even listen to the show. All of our waterfront parks that we work so hard to preserve, the one we just bonded for that we're going to fix and we want, it's the, you know, the pride of our community, the presence of helicopters is just part of, you can't have a conversation with someone when they're there. Our 9/11 ceremony was disrupted when you're, I remember we were sitting down there when the helicopters came by so low, we couldn't even hear the ceremony. So, we can't even...
It's also, I mean, the one thing that you didn't spend as much time on is, you know, the accident that happened that was so tragic happened over water, and it easily could have happened over land, especially, you know, if it, if it broke apart or if it hit a drone. And then you're, then you're talking about, you know, not only the tragedy of the passengers, but the tragedy of potentially people that live in the community. And they are unnecessary. And even if you drew the line and said, maybe those individual wealthy commutes you can save, you don't need the tourist ones, right? You just don't need people that want to go up and take a selfie over New York City. You just don't need those.
And the flight path of, of the helicopter that broke up actually did go over Hoboken earlier in the day. And it went over daycare centers. It went over schools. It went over apartment buildings. So, it's not, it does not take a lot of imagination to say, and it is in one of the whereas, which I'll just read. Whereas the catastrophic helicopter crash last Thursday could have been even more tragic if this helicopter had flown above and crashed into densely populated areas in Hoboken and Jersey City, including schools and daycare centers. And since 1970, 30 separate helicopters have plunged from the skies in New York metropolitan area. The owner of New York helicopter made a comment to the media that things break, things break. When airplanes break, we, we wouldn't accept this. If 30 airplanes crashed in our community, we wouldn't accept this. Helicopters seem to be literally under the radar in this kind of thing, and it's wrong. So, yep.
Yep. Anyone else?
Yeah.
This is for both of them, both resolutions.
Yes.
Please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yeah.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cataro?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Motion to close?
Close.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you all.
We got that in, we got that.
Thank you.